Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regular Board meeting of the Board of Supervisors this Tuesday, July 22nd. We will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk?
Closed session, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, Conference of Legal Counsel, Re-Anticipating Litigation, One Case, Significant Exposure to Litigation. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, Conference of Legal Counsel, Re-Existing Litigation, Calaveras Planning Coalition versus Calaveras County Board of Supervisors at All Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 19CB44471.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? And do we have any public comment online?
If there's any public comment, please, a reminder that you have to raise your hand to be allowed to speak. We have no online public comment requests.
Okay. With that, we will break to closed session and come back at nine o'clock. Thank you. Supervisor Pollard, will you lead us?
By the will of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We were in closed session earlier. We did not finish our closed session, so we will be going back into closed session at the end of this meeting, and we will report out at the next meeting. With that, we'll move on to staff announcements.
Good morning, Chair, respectful, respective Board members, and everyone else. This is Lulu today, and Arshana. So Lulu is a pit bull mix. She's estimated to be about three years old and 56 pounds. Yes, she's a little talker. She was found at Sanders Market, and we don't know if she was dumped or lost, but no one came forward to choose her or to own up to her. And she's a very, very big, lovey, sweetie girl. Uh oh. Not destructive like my nylonator. Lulu is a good walker, and she takes treats with a very gentle mouth. She waits patiently in her kennel while waiting to go for her walks in the morning, and she loves to play ball. We do not have an office cat right now, which is a good thing, because that means that we've adopted our cats out. But we don't know how she is with cats, so that's going to be a test. She does like other dogs and other pups. And right now, she's just waiting for a forever loving home. Lulu will be spayed before she does go home. And if you have another dog, another animal, then she must have a meet and greet with them. This is Lulu. And Arshana, our awesome, awesome staff. She's, she is three, about three years old. Yeah, and she's about 56 pounds. Yes, very solid.
A little bit of red nose in that mix.
And she's a little pit bull mix, definitely. Good call.
I see it. I've had it.
You want to talk, Lulu? You want to talk? Speak.
Thank you, Arshana. Thank you, Lulu. Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Martin.
Good morning. I want to give an announcement announcing that the Sacramento Chapter of APWA has selected two of our projects for Project of the Year. So the Manji Ranch Bridge Replacement Project over Coyote Creek has won in the Structures category, and the Valley Springs Safety School Improvement Project was also nominated for Project of the Year and won in the Transportation category. So the APWA Chapter Awards Program recognizes public works that demonstrate excellent management, administration, design, sustainability, and construction, along with community relations, and the strong alliance among the management agency, designer, contractor, and construction management team who work together on these projects. So Supervisor Huberty, with the Manji Bridge being in your district, and Supervisor Toffenelli, with the Valley Springs Project being in your district, you are invited to attend the Project of the Year Award Event held on August 8th at Sacramento, and where we will have selection photos of our project along with the presentation of our award plaques. So we hope to see you both there.
See you there. Thank you. Are there any other staff announcements? We'll move on to item number three, then.
Item three, proclamation, probation proclaimed the week of July 20 through 26, 2025, as probation service week in Calaveras County.
And I'll hand the gavel over to Supervisor Stopper.
Thank you, Chair Huberty. Whereas probation services include pre-trial services, adult services, juvenile services, and post-release community supervision services. And whereas probation is a period of time during which an individual who has committed a crime is supervised by a probation officer rather than being incarcerated, and whereas the goal of probation services is to prevent crime and delinquency, reduce recettivism, is that right? Restore victims and promote healthy families and communities. And whereas probation services provide effective treatment and assistance programs based on the supervised individual's assessed needs. And whereas probation services seek to rehabilitate supervised individuals and guide them back into society while minimizing the likelihood that they will commit a new offense. And whereas probation services allow offenders to remain in the community and continue working and supporting their families. Well, Kim, Ms. Craddock, you know, I've been fortunate enough not to have to be rehabilitated at this point in my life, but I've seen your work and your departments, and it's awesome. You know, that, that, that end of it and everything, you know, rehabilitate as opposed to incarcerate, so.
Thank you. You know, and I would like to thank my staff that was able to come. Not all of them are here because they had other duties to attend to, but they work very hard to enforce the terms and conditions of probation and make sure people under their supervision are law-abiding. And not only that, they provide direct services. We do courage to change in the jail, in the community, in via Zoom for those who can't come. Our juvenile officers provide programs within the schools, especially at CRA, and we're working on getting some into Calaveras to provide services, preventative services, so that they don't then come into probation. It's been a lot of work, and, but they're very good at what they do and working with the public that they work with.
Excellent. We do appreciate you all. Is there any other comments or public comment?
I'm the public, and I have a very unique situation. I always feel like I'm on probation. There are always people watching me, so I know what it's like to be under the care of the public. These folks do a fantastic job. When I hear some of the stories of some of the things they have to, some of the cases they have, I'm astounded. Really, what would help these people is to commit these crimes. They just got a job. They just have so much time on their hands. So with that, I'd like to thank you very, very much.
Any further public comment?
With that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Do we have a motion?
I'll move this item.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Andal. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes five of the Board. So now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras this 22nd day of July 2025 does hereby recognize July 20 through 26, 2025 as probation services week to highlight probation's immense contributions to our communities and state. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. You guys going down there?
I think there are going to be quite a few coming up.
Can you come in on crutches?
Yes.
I am that way, yes.
Yeah, first you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you. There we go. Okay, we'll move on now to general public comment. Madam Clerk?
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of the business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Stradman.
Good morning. I should tell you, Martin Huberty, Supervisor Martin Huberty, Chair, that the reason I made sure that Calaveras County didn't have a sign-in page, I brought my attorney one day and said, "This is a violation of the Brown Act. I don't want this happening anymore." And so you no longer have a page for people to sign in anymore. And the intention was, the intention of the Brown Act was people can have some anonymity when they come forward and speak. So you might as well say my name. Everybody knows. Everybody out there knows. You know, I don't have anonymity. This weekend, on Sunday alone, I went to two memorials and a birthday party. I didn't see any of you folks there. And these are known people in the community. So whatever you're doing, you're doing it wrong. You're not out in the community. You're not answering your county-supplied cell phones. The only way you can get Mr. Toffenelli is if you call his personal cellphone, because he's, may have told, no, I don't care. You're a good guy. Even though you said things, you're a good guy. You're just not doing your jobs. You need to help up with meetings. You need to have office hours where people can get into contact with you. And there are lobbyists that need to be in contact with you as well. People that look for large, back when the largest entities in the county is, is not able to talk to you folks individually about matters that pertain to this or their business. I have a few minutes. Let me tell you a story. Back in the mid-'80s, I met Dennis Allen. And he was a, he was a police officer with the Oakland Police Department. He became the sheriff later on. And I met him in the Ice House, a hangout for us kids in the Moncler District of Oakland. He was, we had a problem, and that was the mayor of Oakland's son was dealing drugs and running girls. And he decided to come up and do it in our neighborhood, so we could have stopped that, and the feds took it over, and they busted him. But Dennis Allen was a good guy, and the best, one of the best sheriffs we've ever had. With that, sit steady, and we can, the rest of this we can have another time.
Thank you. Terry?
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair and Senator for Calaveras, Senate President Pro Tempore for New California. I wanted to do a report on the election we had on the Saturday before last. We had half, over half again, as many people more come. I expect we'll have double this one coming up here that I'm giving you on. And I really do invite you to come. I surely invite you to look at the Constitution. I'm going to read you what they voted on. So we note, of course, Article 4, Section 4's Guarantee Clause that is a compact with the United States. California has broke that compact. Well, we're not a constitution. We're a corporate document instead of a constitution. But in it, we are required to provide a republican form of government. That's where we each get representation in a fair manner. Freedom from invasion and freedom from domestic violence. Can I say the word fentanyl? How about all these folks coming across border causing crimes they are in? Drug cartel, you know, just those folks. So the first question, would you support New California State that provides for you a republican representative form of government? Freedom from domestic violence, support lawful legislation and law enforcement, and freedom from invasion, keeping our borders secure as constitutionally required? Everybody said yes, of course. Number two, Governor Newsom just announced on July 10, 2025, that California is out of cash to properly fund the state's retirement system. Isn't everybody here working for Calaveras County paying into that? So you all got to pay into it, but the state doesn't? That sounds good. California Public Employees Retirement System, CALPERZ, and State Teachers Retirement Systems, STURS, would you support New California State's Constitution, which protects against fiscal mismanagement requiring a balanced budget audited annually and criminal penalties for financial malfeasance? Everybody voted yes. Would you support petitioning Congress for a new state whose government will guarantee protection of your rights as enumerated by the New California State Constitution, Page 1-4? Everybody voted yes. So this is kind of important. You're members of this county. I want this. And do you know what's most exciting? I love doing these. I love doing it, and I'll tell you why. They can't wait to show me their ID. They cannot wait to show that they live in this county. And they get nervous because, oh, is this going to work? Is this okay? They show up, and we had ages 19 to 80. It was a fabulous event. It's going back to the small polling places. COVID destroyed that, and that is community, and we had community. I invite you on August 2nd to join us. Please, at least, look at the Constitution. If you ever want to talk, you know how to get ahold of me. I'm more than willing. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Mr. Butler?
My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. On June 24th, I explicitly cautioned this Board of Supervisors that a misguided vote to approve $350,000 for the Calaveras Visitors Bureau for fiscal year 2025-26 would be countered by me seeking revocation of the CVB's IRS 501(c)(6) tax exam status. A tax-exempt organization complaint referral was submitted to the IRS seeking an investigation to corroborate allegations of the CVB's misuse and abuse of its tax-exempt 501(c)(6) status as a precursor to revocation of the CVB's tax-exempt status for persistently and willfully violating the laws and rules governing mutual benefit nonprofit corporations, those laws and rules differing significantly from those of a public benefit nonprofit corporation in mission, permissive activity, political activity, taxation, fundraising, and other significant aspects. The IRS was informed that the CVB, a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation since July 12, 2021, willfully and persistently misrepresents its legal designation as being a public benefit nonprofit corporation to the County of Calaveras and as a nonprofit association to the City of Angels Camp. The CVB has not been a nonprofit association since April 2000, at which time it incorporated as a public benefit nonprofit corporation. The IRS was informed of significant supporting evidence of the CVB allegedly having persistently and willfully engaged in deceptive business practices by its years-long intentional misuse and concealment of its tax-exempt 501(c)(6) designation as a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation, willfully and persistently contractually misrepresenting its legal designation as being a public benefit nonprofit corporation to the County of Calaveras and as a nonprofit association to the City of Angels Camp, and that the leadership of the CVB willfully and persistently refuses to address this contractual misrepresentation with the County of Calaveras and the City of Angels Camp, its two largest benefactors of public funds representing the source of approximately 90% of the CVB's annual operating funding having been allocated from transient occupancy tax funds. The IRS was informed the CVB's persistence in engaging in a pattern of willfully misrepresenting its legal designation allegedly causes harm to the public interest, financial harm to the community, and potentially harm to any non-governmental donors who may have been induced by the CVB's willful and persistent misrepresentation of its nonprofit corporation type. This pattern of misrepresentation potentially caused non-governmental donors to erroneously believe that their donations were tax-deductible, leaving those donors vulnerable to IRS penalties. My name's Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate that.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Looking to the Board, would the Board like to pull any items? No? Would any member of the public like to pull any items?
Number 12, please.
12?
27, please.
27. Thank you, Captain. Any others? With that, I'll bring it back to the Board, eliminating 12 and 27, and seek a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. We'll move on to item 12. Madam Clerk?
Item 12, action item, administrative office, approve and authorize the Board Chair to sign the Board's response to the June 2, 2025 Grand Jury Report regarding Calaveras County's Health and Human Services Agency.
Madam CEO, would you like to speak to this?
As your Board is aware, the Grand Jury reports on various aspects of local government annually. This year, they had four different county agencies that they reported on, with the Health and Human Services Agency being one of them. This is just, this is just a response to that report.
Thank you. Mr. Stradman?
Yeah, so you have Mr. Doug Oliver, our building inspector, who's also a co-compliance there. I think that that's fantastic. You might want to say a few words. I just want to say what a great job the co-compliance has been doing. They're understaffed, but they get to the matters that need to be taken care of. I think your response shows a misunderstanding of co-compliance and the value of.
Actually, sir, could I just, that's Health and Human Services. I think you wanted to pull item number 13, which is code compliance, if that's.
Oh, sorry. Number 13.
13, okay.
I'll do 13, everybody.
Actually, can you hang on for just a second? You should read item number 13.
We already voted on it.
Oh, good point.
Yeah, but it's not working. I'm just curious.
Do your thing.
I mean, I think the item that was polled was 12, so I think the person can, folks can give public comment on 12. 13's already been voted on.
Okay. Seeing as health and human services is a vital part of what we do in this county, providing services, and I think that Mr. Munoz, Subcomandante Munoz, Marcos, Subcomandante Marcos, has been doing a lot of work over there. I think you should thank him for the, for his efforts. Very diligent. He has worked over that before. Tremendous amount of experience in health and human services. Mr. Munoz, Marcos, Subcomandante Marcos, as we call him, I like to use that term, Subcomandante Marcos. Subcomandante Marcos was a leader that, he, he didn't look for recognition, which like Marcos Munoz. He didn't put himself out there like that while he was working to help the people of Chiapas region of Mexico, indigenous people, fight a land grab by the, by the more powerful, more powerful plants. I think that Marcos works in that spirit. He's a good man, and I can't wait for him to be the next CEO of Calaveras County. Understand? Yeah. Okay. There we go.
Is there any further comment regarding item number 12? Any online?
We have no online public comment.
Great. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board.
So moved.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 27. Captain Sturm?
Item 27?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Read out.
Resolution, Sheriff, one, accept a donation on a 2025 Polaris utility vehicle from the Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team with a value totaling $33,894.78. Two, find that the donation is made in favor of the county for a public purpose. Three, authorize the auditor controller to include the donated vehicle on the Sheriff's Office capital asset inventory. And four, adopt a resolution of gratitude recognizing the Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team for its donation.
Captain Sturm?
Good morning, Board, Mr. Chair, CEO, Hitchcock Counsel, and Madam Clerk. The reason I pulled this item today is that it's not often that the Sheriff's Office has the opportunity to publicly recognize the contributions of the Calaveras Search and Rescue Team. Specifically, this item addresses the donation of a utility vehicle off-road, a utility vehicle, six-seater, and the value of that with accessories is nearly $34,000. The Search and Rescue Team obtains funding by aggressively pursuing grants, public donations. They do an incredible job of fundraising, and they were able to purchase the vehicle which they now wish to donate to the Sheriff's Office. That vehicle will be used by the Sheriff's Office in search and rescue incidents, such as the one that occurred about a week ago, where a mother and nine-year-old child had become lost in the forest roads between West Point and Dorrington. They'd actually spent the night and the day out in the woods before they were reported missing. It's noteworthy that that incident, from the time the Sheriff's Office was notified, dispatched search and rescue, and was entirely resolved with those folks safely back in their car heading down the hill. Took about six hours. In that six hours, In that six hours, the staff time of volunteers was equivalent to about $5,000 if the Sheriff's Office had used its swarm staff to... for the same rescue. And so, of course, you can figure that cost savings as these incidents progress. Sometimes they last days. Perhaps they can last a week. So the cost savings and the contributions of the team are significant. With that, I have Darrell Tom, and Darrell Tom is a senior member of the Search and Rescue Team. He is also the Chair of the Search and Rescue Board of Directors, and I just wanted him to take a minute to talk briefly about some of the facts of the team and their composition, and basically give the County and the Board an understanding of the Calaveras Search and Rescue Team. Go ahead, Darrell.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing us to speak with you today. The Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team consists of 35 very dedicated volunteers who commit hundreds of hours every year to train and also conduct incidents, respond to incidents throughout the county for search and rescue operations. The members of our team come from all walks of life, and, you know, in the past, search and rescue has responded to anywhere from 12 to 26 incidents in the county throughout the year. We train and perform and respond to incidents in everything from swiftwater rescue to high and low angle rope rescues, avalanche rescue, cave rescue, and a lot of our work is also helping to search and locate individuals that are identified as lost or missing, including people that walk away from their homes that have, you know, cognitive issues. So we're very involved in the county, and we appreciate the tremendous support that we've gotten from the county and from the Sheriff's Office in particular, Sheriff Whiting and Captain Sturm and Lieutenant Stark, who are integral members of our team and the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Office has been very supportive of our efforts throughout the year, so we want to thank you for the support that we've gotten. We have a great team. We love working in this county, and we're proud to perform a very important mission that supports the residents and visitors to the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell.
And with that, I ask that the Board of Supervisors approve this donation. It will be a valuable asset to the county, to the search and rescue, and to the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this issue?
I'll take this on. Seeing as this morning I was assured that if I got lost, and you didn't hear from me for a while, they'd come out and look for me. Oftentimes, I go hiking, and I go in up to McCollum Peak, just a couple of days. I go down... I enter in Pango Foot, right across in Amaro County and crossing to Calaveras County, and it's just... it can be fairly treacherous down there, falling trees, what have you, and I just feel very confident that these folks will come out and get me. And it's important to have organizations like this, and that people know about them, and that we show our appreciation. So with that, thank you very much, and I recommend that they do approve this.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'll bring it back to the Board.
If I may, sir, thank you, Lieutenant, for pulling this, reading through them and seeing that it recognized, you know, I was kind of surprised it wasn't on the regular agenda, just so we can recognize them. You brought up the amount of money saved because of man-hours. I'd say that, you know, a dollar amount's not enough. It's invaluable, the service you go, just with the amount of manpower, just throughout high school. Over 30 years ago, I did train with search and rescue, repelling and everything, for quite some time, and the amount of technical experience getting out there and doing those types of services is just astounding. So thank you for everything before even the donation, you know? It's great for the community and everything, so with that, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Supervisor. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, item number 29.
Item 29, resolution, planning, one, conduct a public hearing, two, approve the CEQA notice of exemption, and three, approve general plan amendment 2024-061, amending the 150,279 square foot portion of land shown on Exhibit A, currently occupied by the retail business Spence Ranch Feed and Supply located within the 18.79 acre parcel described as parcel B of ROS 25-64 from working lands to commercial.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open a public hearing. You're on.
We are on and ready to go.
Thank you, Gina.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Gina.
So, long time coming. It's been about a year since this project kicked off right here in this very room. So today, we are taking a look at a general plan amendment and zoning amendment for William Spence, application number 2024-061. The project location is 1235 Highway 49 in Angels Camp. So I'm sure you all recall, this is a Board of Supervisors-directed amendment. The purpose of the application, or this project, is to correct a technical mapping error. The project includes a general plan amendment from working lands to commercial for the purpose of rezoning a portion of this parcel from A1ME, general agriculture mineral extraction, to C2, general commercial. The area to be amended is currently occupied by Spence Ranch Feed Supply, which was established back in 1978. The area which has been surveyed was found to be the minimum area necessary to create consistency between the general plan, the zoning, and the existing land use. Land use which currently includes a retail feed and farm supply store, accessory structures including hay barns, storage buildings, outdoor storage areas, and the parking lot. The area that we're talking about is equal to 150,279 square foot portion of an 18.79 acre parcel shown here as Exhibit A. And further described, the parcel is known as parcel B of Record of Survey 25-64. This parcel was a result of a lot line adjustment that was done in 2023 for two purposes. One was to separate the owner's residence from the business, and the other was to eliminate the boundary line that actually ran through the middle of the business for the purpose of getting the entire feed store and all of its accessory uses onto one legal parcel. So again, this is about a year ago, July 16, 2024. We were before you with a comprehensive update to the county zoning code. Part of that was the elimination of the RC base zone. At that time, we determined that the uses in the RC base zone were overlapping with those uses in C1 and C2, so the proposal was to eliminate RC. Obviously, parcels that are zoned RC have to be rezoned something, so the exercise resulted in a zoning map amendment. We amended all the zoning of the parcels that were zoned RC to either C1 or C2, which was local commercial and general commercial. So we identified a total of 37 parcels to be rezoned. All of the existing land uses of those parcels were commercial. However, only 36 of those had land use designations designated through the general plan as commercial. The exception was the Spence Ranch Feed Supply Store. They too had a commercial existing land use, but the land use designation designated by the general plan was working lands. We had an opportunity at that time to amend the land use designation during the 2019 general plan update, but inadvertently, we overlooked that, and the parcel was designated resource production. Just a little bit of history here. We actually, the Board, in 1986, rezoned a portion of this initial parcel RC. That was about 150,000 square foot. It was just noted as a triangle noted on an assessor's map, no real defined area, and that parcel was zoned unclassified at the time. So we rezoned the feed store portion of that larger parcel RC, leaving the remainder of the parcel A1ME. During that 1986 amendment, the parcel was known to be designated by the general plan as agriculture estates. It was originally part of the Angels' sphere of influence. The only zone district that was found compatible in the agriculture estate's land use designation was actually A1. So zoning that parcel, that portion of the parcel RC at the time was inconsistent. However, the Board made some very specific findings in order to approve that ordinance, and those were these three findings as follows. The RC zone was consistent with the grandfathered commercial use existing on the subject parcel, and the subject parcel was developed and an existing parking lot meeting the requirements of the zoning code for the approved zone district. And finally, the subject parcel has a legally existing non-conforming land use, and the approved zone change is permitted under the provisions of the Calaveras County General Plan. So those were specific findings that were made by the Board back in 1986 to zone that portion of the larger parcel RC. Again, in 2019 is when we amended or updated, I should say, the county general plan, and at that time, we designated the entire Spence parcel resource production. So we inadvertently overlooked the fact that there was a portion of that parcel that was zoned RC. We had an opportunity at that point to split the land use designation and apply a commercial land use in addition to the resource production, but for some reason, we just inadvertently overlooked it and redesignated the entire parcel resource production. Then again, in 2023, with an application for a general plan amendment, we amended the land use designation from resource production to working land, and the purpose of that was to accommodate a lot line adjustment, that lot line adjustment that we previously just spoke about, and we left the zoning, a split zoning of A1ME and RC. So again, a little bit of history that'll kind of tell you how we got to this point. In 1978, the county issued the first building permit for construction of the feed store. The parcel was zoned unclassified at the time. Then, on the heels of that, in 1979, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the expansion of that feed store. Again, the parcel was still zoned unclassified. Then between 1979 and 2011, the county issued numerous building permits, which included additions to the feed store, hay barns, commercial addition for storage, and then eventually the owner's residence. Land use within, and general plan designations and zoning within a one-mile radius of the Spence Ranch property includes commercial uses. To the north, we've got Angels Camp Vet Hospital. To the south, you've got the Humane Society. Those are noted as commercial uses, further defined as animal care and boarding services. Then we've got industrial uses in the general area as well. Suburban propane is noted in the current code as a chemical mineral and explosive storage use, and then grub steak storage, which is a personal storage use. So currently, the suburban propane currently has two 25,000-gallon propane tanks. That parcel is just adjacent to the Spence Ranch property. Further south, you've got the City of Angels, which has a mix of use, commercial, industrial, residential, as well as public uses, which spans for approximately two and a half miles. Zoning in the general area includes parcels that are designated working land and resource production, which is all of the green, the sartreuse and the light-colored green areas are all agriculture preserve, general agriculture, and residential agriculture. Additionally, the rural transition parcels, which are the turquoise-green parcels, in addition to the RRR-designated parcels, which is that butter yellow, those parcels all contain zonings of residential agriculture and rural residential. Further down south, the black demonstrates the border of the City of Angels. Just below that is a green parcel with white speckles. That is actually the Capella Park area, and that parcel is zoned recreation. All of the red parcels are those commercial designations that contain the C2 or general commercial zone district. So you can see by that map that there is a diverse, quite diversified mix of uses in that general area, which we are finding the Spence Ranch parcel is actually compatible with, being that there are multiple other commercial and industrial uses in the general area. Everything just seems to kind of work out there. So we reviewed this under CEQA and found the project is exempt under two different exemptions, 150061, which is a common sense exemption, finding no possibility of significant effects on the environment, in addition to 15305, which are minor alterations in land limitations. As previously just suggested, is we found that the project is exempt from CEQA. Under the general plan is consistent with goals and policies and objectives of the general plan. General plan goal, land use LU1, encourages mixed-use development, including residential, commercial, visitor-serving, job-generating uses in existing communities. So after 47 years, the Spence Ranch Feed and Supply Store has remained an economically viable business, employing up to 12 people continually. The store has been a critical resource to our agricultural community, which has been a sustainable industry in Calaveras County for decades. Under general plan, general plan implementation measure PF2D, which allows the Environmental Management Agency to exempt requirements for public water and public sewer when not feasible in commercially designated parcels. So in order to designate a parcel commercial, the general plan says, well, we'd like to have public water and public sewer on these parcels. However, there is an exception, and that exception can be made by environmental health or environmental management. So they actually have made that finding. The parcel has been adequately served by onsite well and an approved onsite wastewater system since the store opened. Connecting to public services is not feasible, as it would require annexation into the city in addition to the installation of approximately a half-mile of infrastructure in order to connect. The proposed zoning is consistent with the general plan, as the C2 zone implements the commercial land use designation. The project is of public interest, as it is not controversial. This subject matter was discussed in a public hearing during the Board of Supervisors' discussion of the zoning code update. No public comment was received at the time. The application and the notice of public hearing was circulated with no comments received. In addition, there was a 90-day tribal consultation, which resulted again in no comments. In addition, there was a 90-day tribal consultation, which resulted again in no comments. The area to be amended is the minimum area necessary to encumber the existing use. There is safe and adequate access to the parcel, and the C2 zone is allowed, will allow the property to continue to serve the public for years to come. The project will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Land use varies within the one-mile radius, including large acreage agriculture, large acreage acreage residential parcels, commercial, industrial, as well as the mixed land use within the City of Angels. And again, there's been no public opposition. The project promotes public health and safety and the general welfare and serves the goals and the purposes of Title 17. The purpose of the re-zone is to establish consistency with the existing land use, which again has been taking place for 47 years. So this project was heard before your appointed county planning commission on June 12th. Their recommendation to you is to approve the findings for the notice of exemption, amend the general plan, land use designation, and adopt the zoning as as recommended. Again, this is a two-part project. So the first portion of this parcel is the general plan amendment. If approved, then the zoning will follow. Obviously, we cannot re-zone the parcel without the appropriate land use designation. So that's why we're taking into consider both in consideration, both the general plan and the zoning amendment. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and the presentation will be for both items, both 29 and 30. So the first recommendation is is considering the notice of exemption and the general plan amendment. Have any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you, that was very thorough. Is there any public comment? Any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Of course, it's a public hearing, sorry, thank you. And I'll now close the public hearing, seeing no comments, and bring it back to the board.
I'll move the item.
We have a motion?
I will second this item.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. And we'll move on to item 30 now. Madam Clerk?
Item 30, ordinance planning, conduct, one, conduct a public hearing. Two, approve the notice of SEQA exemption. Three, adopt and ordinance approving 2024-061 zoning amendment for the 150,279 square-foot portion of land shown on Exhibit A, currently occupied by the retail business Spence Ranch Feed and Supply, located within the 18.79 acre parcel described as parcel B of ROS 25-64, from A1 to ME to C2, I'm sorry, from A1ME to C2. And four, authorize summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property.
Thank you. And seeing as you've already made the presentation, do we have any?
Sir. Public hearing.
Opening of public hearing, thank you. Do you have any comments? Seeing none? Are there any public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on now to item number 31. Madam Clerk?
Item 31, Resolution OES, adopt a resolution authorizing Calvers County Director of Emergency Services Services or Designee to, one, submit a full grant proposal to the 2025 Sierra Nevada Conservancy Wildfire and Forest Resilience Grant Program for the Lily Gap Vegetative Maintenance Unit One project. Two, accept and execute the grant award if awarded. And three, execute necessary project documentation as needed to complete the grant proposal project.
Hold.
Good morning, Board. Air Corps Director of Emergency Services. Clerk has read, we are, we were approached by the Cal enforcement team with Pat McGreevy to submit and serve as the fiscal agent for Lily Gap Phase One. So 157 acres northeast of West Point. That was originally a shaded fuel break constructed in 2013. So this is, you know, 12 years later, maintenance for that to keep it a viable fuel break. For our office, we will capture the de minimis rate for revenue by serving as the fiscal agent. So that is what we are asking for approval for. Any questions?
Board have any questions? I actually do. I sit on the board of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and my understanding, because I asked when these grants came out specifically about maintenance, because obviously, maintenance is a huge thing. I was under the impression that none of these grants would be granted to a maintenance project. I defer to Pat, because Pat knows better than anybody. But if we could just double check that, I would appreciate it.
So from what I've been involved in, there was the initial sort of, is SNC interested in this? And I'm not sure if there was some internal board communication or not on what will be awarded, but the interest was granted for this project specifically.
Okay, well, then I think we should go for it. Can't hurt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. To go along with that, that's been the conversation with Pat McGreevy in the past is, a lot of times these grants come forward, we do these this work, and the and the concern being is the maintenance and upkeep of these fuel fuel breaks, because if you don't keep them up, then it's it's the full cost, starting all over again. So hopefully, it works out, and everyone's open-minded to keeping these things up so that we can have our fuel breaks.
Yeah, and we just had our first wildfire resiliency charter meeting last week, where we are gonna, all of the players in fuels reduction and that sort of work are now in a room, and we are going to create sort of a master plan on how we continue forward for the next decade, because we've got projects like McKay's and other ones that are going that are millions of dollars. And if we don't keep them viable, we lose that resource. So we are going to continue that. We are applying for other grants as well. And we should find out about like wildfire defense grant here in the next 30 to 60 days, which also targeted that area. So all we can do is continue to try and present these things and put it to work.
And goats can't do it all. That was, that's a big idea by a lot of them.
Yeah.
I say cattle.
Cattle.
Well, the cattle can't get up the steep, steep.
Is there any public comment regarding this?
Just let me tell you that this is the best OES director we've ever had. He's doing a fantastic job, always very communicative. For a moment, I'll let me tell you about Lily Gap up there. Lily Gap is a very independent little little area. They have their own water district. They occasionally they'll call me when they need to have an emergency or something. But these these fire breaks, how important they are to our community. We have a fire break to the to the east, which is was built by, was built by SPI with concern for the community. Oftentimes, you don't think of these large corporations as having a concern for the community, only they're land. But they do, they did, and they built that, and it needs to be maintained. And hopefully, Pat McGreevy, who I run into occasionally at the supermarket in in Jackson, he lives in in the Jackson area. And we go over these things just in an idle conversation right there on the spot. He's a good guy, and he's found his calling finally. And I'm very, very pleased to say that I know the man. And I'm very pleased to say I know Mr. McGreevy.
Thank you.
I did not solicit that comment, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comments, is there any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move this item.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to item 32.
Item 32, Resolution Human Resources, adopt a resolution, one, updating the title of senior engineer to engineer manager, two, updating the job description to reflect the reporting structure, and three, increasing salary of the position.
Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, Chair Heverdy, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I am bringing before you today, asking to update our job description from senior engineer to engineering manager. We have had four failed recruit, or three failed recruitments, and we are on our fourth recruitment in trying to fill this position. We've only had actually one interview through the whole process. And so I went out, researched other county cities, and looked at their structure, their pay structure. So we do feel that making it more of a management clear that this position is managing a division within Public Works, although the job description says that sometimes people look at titles and then move on to the next open position. So we think that clarifying the title and updating the salary to be comparable to those around us will help in making us successful in this recruitment. Right now, we have a contract person doing the work, and so that can be very pricey. They also, it does not, they're not a permanent person in that department. So for future continued operations, we do want to make sure we get a Calaveras County engineering manager in there.
Any board questions?
I do have my backup there.
Don't see any. Is there any public comment regarding this item?
Oh, sorry.
I'm a big fan of Jody here. We've known each other a long time. She does a fantastic job. I'm a big fan of Julie here. I'm a big fan of her. We've known each other a long time, and she does fantastic work. My problem with this agenda item is that they must have a club of human resources directors from the from these neighboring counties. They all get together and say, yeah, first you go and raise your salary, and then we'll say we need to raise our salary to make it competitive. And this just goes on and on. And I just, you know, the, we have one of the highest paid building officials there, even though he takes on marijuana, which is a, that's a loss for us, maybe it's a loss leader or under, drug more. We just can't keep on going down this road. At some point, we just have to say, we have to look at our our own dynamics within this county and say, okay, we are an independent county. We are not completely reliant on the neighboring counties to to determine our our wages and and that's just very important that we that we take that into consideration and not not continue down this road. With that, I'll send it back to Judy.
Thank you. Is there any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
This this is for Public Works engineer, right?
It's the, yes, it's the engineering manager who manages their CIP.
Right. And not so much that it's even comparable to other counties as engineers in the corporate world are pretty much retaining, the corporate side and commercial is retaining based on salaries, and we can't even, you know, it doesn't even have to do with neighboring counties.
So I looked at, so our problem is we can't be competitive with private sector.
Right.
Engineers make an insane amount of money.
That's that's where it's at.
And there's not as many engineers coming out of school, which is the other problem that we have. There's just not enough.
Same with council.
Yes.
Yeah. So there's there's more work than there are engineers.
Yes.
Okay. With that, I'll move it.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero, thank you. Stay right there.
We actually have a presentation.
Oh, you do? Oh, come on, of course you do. I'll make sure you read. Okay, we'll move on now to item 33.
Item 33, informational item, Human Resources. One, receive a presentation from the Human Resources Department on the draft compensation policies for elected officials and board members. Two, receive recommendations for salary increases. And three, provide staff direction on the next steps.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And today I'm bringing to your board draft policies for setting the compensation of the board and the other elected officials. And I know this is not an easy discussion. It's uncomfortable. And so today is just a discussion of the policy. This is not adopting the policy. It's bringing to you for discussion. We can make the changes, and then we would be bringing it back. There's a lot of steps also we have to take that I will go over at the end of the presentation. So of course, last year, we implemented a countywide compensation study and addressed salaries accordingly. Elected officials were not, were not in the implementation of the class and comp study. We did ask Evergreen, the CEO directed HR to work with Evergreen on doing a separate compensation study for the elected officials. And then also to bring back options to the board on how how we can set your salaries, where it's kind of an automatic process and not having to be adopted each time. So working with the elected officials, the CEO, county council, that's how we got to the policy before you. We started with a draft of Evergreen and then worked through it and made some updates to it that we felt was necessary. So kind of going back to the presentation that Evergreen gave to your board regarding the elected officials, they did state to, their recommendations were to consider a weighted approach that includes both local market considerations, cost of living adjustments for the Board of Supervisors, and then separate adjustment considerations from the board. We would need to look at untieing the board, the board salary from our elected officials. Right now, we have an ordinance out there, 2908, which states that the board's salary is 50% of the average of the auditor, assessor, treasure tax collector, clerk recorder, and sheriff. And so that's how we've been adjusting board salaries as their salaries are updated. They also, Evergreen also suggested that we do look internally as well as externally for the data, look at department head positions that are comparable, and so make sure that we have an internal equity. So doing this will maintain an internal and external market equity using that weighted approach. And then also base future salary adjustments on a formula based And then also base future salary adjustments on a formula based defined policy. So that's what we're doing today. We are bringing you the, the formula-based policy to discuss.
Judy, can I ask you really quickly? This font on this presentation is different than what we're seeing. Has it changed since we've looked at it in the package?
The policy is the same as what I sent.
Okay.
What was uploaded is what I sent. I don't know if the system, because what was attached was PDF, so maybe that is why the font changed.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yes, but none of the data has changed.
Verbiage is the same on that. I didn't know in the future slides if it had changed.
No. The only, the only thing is I was asked the very last slide to split to two, but all the exact same data.
Thank you.
But yeah, I noticed that too when I, when I brought it up. So to discuss the policy for our assessor, auditor, controller, clerk, register recorder, district attorney, sheriff, and treasure tax collector. So we do have two separate policies. So this is the first policy that we're going to discuss is what is attached to those electeds. And so the methodology that we are recommending is to base their salary on fifty percent comparative market benchmarking, and then fifty percent alignment, alignment with appointed department head pay rates that are comparable. And then also to make sure we don't have, I'm sorry, to make sure we don't have compaction between our elected official and their principal assistant or their next-in-command, they are stating to make sure we have a fifteen percent between their, their principal assistant and the compensation of the elected official. One of the things that Evergreen also recommended is making sure that we have a cap of ten percent annual adjustment, that our comparison counties are Amador, El Dorado, Lake Stanislas, Nevada, Sutter, and Tooluma. And it looks like something is missing. And then they recommended the benchmark is a ten percent differential of the regional average for each elected position. So it's just making sure that our formula is not putting our electeds too far below the market. And so we're staying within ten percent of that market. So as an example of the formula that we have, and Nick and I have calculated this out forwards, backwards, making sure that the formula is, and the policy is correct. And so this is an example of our auditor. So we took the pay from our auditor. We did the external benchmark. We pulled the salaries of those counties that I listed. And so then we also took fifty percent of that external. Then we also looked at the fifty percent of our internal and then calculated that out. Then we took and made sure that the nine point three percent increase, that is the difference there, they were still fifteen percent above their next-in-command. And so basically their new salary would be one seventy-six, two oh one, which is, like I said before, a one, a nine point three percent increase, because we have two, five point two percent, which was our internal, and external was four point one. Any questions on calculating out the? All right. So just kind of touching base again on how we wrote this policy up. Been working closely with county council. This would be an automated increase unless we had fiscal constraints, and then the board could choose to defer the increase. But this would be, it's something that HR would start early in the year, bring the information to our administrative office to make sure that, that it's included in budget. But it is an automated process that we would look at every year. This is separate from COLAs. So as we, next year, we go into negotiations, all of that. COLAs are brought separate than the salary review. Any questions? I see lights.
She had her light on first.
I'm sorry.
That was accidental.
I was gonna let you go first. Ladies first.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for bringing this forward, and I'm still in favor of moving forward with the policy of separating us from any vote that we make that would tie us to our own salaries. You know, with that, you know, I definitely am in favor of moving forward with something of this. I just, you know, certain things in here, I understand why, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing. Well, I am disagreeing, but I understand why. You know, market competitiveness with peer counties, we aren't competing to have these people here. They have to live in our county. And, you know, from, from my, my point of view, would be more credibility for the work they do, because we have excellent people here in elected positions, and they deserve to be paid to the level of their, of their excellent work, you know? So I, I'm just saying, one as opposed to the other. Here, a lot of this is general HR wording put in, floating over. I think elected officials are different. You know, not, well, beyond the parent part, but, and also, I'm one that believes, look, you're doing this because you believe in the people, not for the salary so much, although that is a determining factor for a lot of people, whether they can afford to do it, you know? But, you know, so that, that's all I have to say about it. It's, you know, it's always been my grind on elected officials and salaries, you know, because one, you're doing it for the community, and the other, with your hand out, is where I have my own personal conflict on it. So that's all.
Yeah, no, I completely.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you on that, Judy, you, Judy. My apologies. Got a little tongue twisted there. You know, good job on this. I appreciate you moving forward in the way we asked. And I can, you know, I would support moving forward in the same direction.
Okay, do need to go over, because we, the formula that I just discussed was for depart, the department head elected officials, sheriff and district attorney. And so for the board, they did recommend a little bit more blended formula. And so we're looking at forty percent of cost of living adjustment based on CPI, forty percent of the average annual base salary of supervisors in peer counties, and same counties that we listed before, and then twenty percent of the annual percentage adjustment approved by the California Superior Court judges, as determined by the state. And so this is, this is blended a little bit more, and I do understand you are correct. You know, as an elected official, you are in this county, but to be able to have some type of benchmark to set what salary should be, we do have to look at those around us to be able to have a, a set benchmark. And so this is, this is the recommended formula for, that came from Evergreen.
Just as an exercise, can we work how that applies with the forty percent, forty percent, and twenty percent, how that adds together? Just, because I, I understand as myself, but the pu, public needs to see it, because, you know, how's that add up?
So right now, for the, for your board, I do have the calculations. So right now, there would not be, something, sorry, hold on one second.
Be Y-rated?
Nope, it won't be Y-rated. So right now, the way that we would work this out with looking at peer counties, we're actually above the peer counties that we looked at by twelve percent. And so when we take and work out the formula, and so it would be, right now, there would be no adjustment. When we look at the judges, it would, there's a slight adjustment, adjustment for the judges, but then when we look at being above our, some of our peer counties, there would be no, no adjustment for the Board of Supervisors per our current formula. Evergreen did a little bit different. They, they had, I think, they had thirteen counties that they looked at. Right now, we're, we've had whittled it down to seven, getting rid of some of those larger ones. But, and so right now, under the policy, there would not be a recommendation for the Board of Supervisors to receive any increases.
Thank you for that. Where's it come at compared to what we're doing now with the whole equation put together? Barely under? Barely over? Exactly the same? I bet you it's barely under. So we would be Y-rated.
So I don't think the, the idea of the policy wasn't necessarily, when we're taking a look at the comparisons to Y-rate, but it just, there's no adjustment needed. We're looking at if there's, oh, sorry, go ahead. So it did, it did come in fairly, fairly close.
Fairly close is over or under?
Annually, about three thousand dollars over.
We are, right now, three thousand dollars over.
Annually.
Thank you. That's a good answer.
So I think.
So I, you know, so the point being is, I can support that equation because it's not jacking us up right now. So, thank you. I, I know I asked it the hard way, I was like, if we were being Y-rated, and you kind of got defensive for us. You don't need to be that, because you're actually coming in with a number that's going to be a little bit lower on annual, I think, so that, you know, it's not like we're, we're putting forward something that's going to boost our incomes up. So thank you for that.
Right. So I think, just for clarity for everyone, you know, board member salaries do have to be set via ordinance, or the methodology has to set via ordinance. So if the board gives direction to move forward with this, we would have to bring this policy forward via an ordinance. And then once it's in effect, basically on an annual basis going forward, as Ms. Hawkins said, this formula will be used to then generate a number, which, and it sounds like at the moment, it would not, said formula would not result in any increase, but of course, going forward, depending on what judges' salaries do and the compared in counties, you may, that may come into effect.
I, I do have a question. And it's kind of going back to the last one with the elected officials. If we do something like this, and we agree to it, and we bring it back, and we adopt it, are we set in stone on these calculations? Or is there ability to, to go above it or below it, whatever? I mean, right now, we have different.
So I do, the idea of these policies was to have an automated process, so we didn't have to continually bring back to you when there needed to be salary increases. It was just a, once adopted, then it is an automated process. Now, we are saying that every three to five years, the, we, the CEO and HR should look at the policy, come back, make sure it's effective, are there any changes that need to be made? But I think the idea was to adopt a formula that we're, we're not changing constantly, that it is an automated process. So I, I just wanted to add to Ms. Hawkins' discussion here. We were really looking to find an objective way of setting these salaries that had some methodology to it, that we were being fair to our elected officials, that they're being compensated adequately for the jobs that they're doing. A number of them have very high level of skills. I know our district attorney, I believe, is in the room. And as we've all heard, attorneys are difficult to come by. So ensuring that we're compensating these positions that require a high level of skill at an adequate salary that is objective in the marketplace is where we're trying to get to.
And I understand that, but what I'm looking at is just non-elected department heads and their ability to go up because of the way it is. And then this being set in stone, them not having the ability other than cost of living or looking at whatever, that, and it could be that some of the department heads that aren't elected eventually get up to a point where they're above whatever they are.
That could happen. That's not uncommon. That's true. But I will say, part of the formula takes into account the appointed department head. That factors into the analysis. So you're absolutely correct that, but that's one of the inputs into this formula.
Compaction is considered.
Right.
Also, I have a question, because every time you go through this formula here, you're saying, now we're doing it a little bit more non-objectively, and then it goes before the board. We still vote on it. We still vote on it, right?
So the idea, so the way this policy is currently drafted, and it is, as Ms. Hawkins said, it's a draft, the way this is currently drafted, the idea is that it would become essentially an automatic thing, right? Where you have these objective numbers, you have a formula, it gets calculated every year, and then that is, you know, the CEO puts that into the budget. Now, the board would have the ability, again, in this draft.
Say no.
The board would say, you know, make findings that we're, we have fiscal issues this year, we're not implementing it. But this policy is designed to make it essentially automated.
Right.
That said, that's a policy choice, and if the board would prefer to adopt a policy that says that in any given year, you have an item brought to you that says, hey, do you want to do this, not do this, change it, that's certainly your prerogative. That's just a policy choice for the board.
But I, I still, every time, even, even with employees, you know, there's kind of built-in automatic things such as COLAs and stuff, but it's still, we approve that during budget.
Yes and no. Things like, things like a COLA are typically negotiated as part of an MOB, right? So yes, while you do approve it during budget, you don't, as a practical matter, have much of a choice.
Right.
This is designed in a similar way, where while you would be technically approving the budgetary appropriations, the policy dictates that it's basically automatic. You, of course, have the prerogative to change that policy at any time.
Right.
But the idea is to make it fairly automated.
Or rescind the policy even.
Of course.
Yeah, okay.
But while the policy remains in place, your only decision point would be approving the appropriations at budget.
With that, I'm not arguing. We have a very qualified district attorney, and I definitely want to compensate her for all the great work she does, you know? And so, you know, I just, as a matter of discussion, you know, along with our other elected officials, you know, I just want to know all the mechanics. And I do like having the ability to, in certain situations, like, let's say, going into the budget like we are this year, let's say if it's worse one year, at that point, if we have to, we may need to rescind said policy, just because that's the reason. if we have to, we may need to rescind said policy, just because that's the reality of our work.
Yes, so, the way this policy is currently drafted, um, if the board were to, in any given year, going into that budget, make those findings that the county's not in an economic position to implement the increases, if any, and to be clear, you know, the formula, as you just saw with the board formula, the formula may or may not result in increases in any given year for any given position, right? Because you, it has the, the data points that are input, but, um, if the board were, in a given year, to say, we financially cannot implement these increases this year, this policy says they, they could be deferred by a vote of the board. Um, but again, this is a draft, if the board wants to, every year, do it differently, you know, vote on it, that's your prerogative, um, we're, we're, we'll take direction, of course.
Yes. And so, I do want to also, um, I think, to answer Supervisor Toffenelli talking about, um, making sure, because our appointed department heads receive merits now, so that's another reason why we go back on an annual basis and do the comparisons of the internal as well. So, if we have department heads getting increases, then it does, it may change up for the elected officials, and then also, depending on market. So, it does take in to consideration that, um, their internal comparisons may be getting All right, so-
Let's go forward, and we'll look at the policy.
All right, I'm not convinced of it, but let's go forward, and, and if the board decides to have you bring back a policy, I'll get more into what the policy says, because right now, we're just looking at what you're presenting, um, that was presented to you by our contractor that we hired for this.
And the, the draft policies are attached to the board item, um, that have the formulas and the inputs.
I don't see them on mine, but, okay.
So, um-
Must be the iPad.
It, it does do that, the, some of the attachments that show-
Yeah, I see.
On the computer, don't show up on the iPad, which, you know, maybe with the new, Stacy, the new program.
So-
But, but make sure it has notes.
And it's not iPad.
So, with that said, um, would it be helpful for Ms. Hawkins to email those, um, policies out to the board members, just to ensure that you've actually gotten copies of them?
And, yeah, and also, I mean, we, Mr. Toffenelli and I have also brought this up before, it should be part of the agenda packet, not just pinned on the side. It's not on these, it's put in differently.
Maybe that's why IT doesn't want to use the iPad.
Yeah, I, you know what, they got to figure it out and get the right program going. But, hey, beside the point, I could, I can-
I assume so, yeah.
Run, run with it for now, and then, and, and then we'll make changes of the policy when it comes forward.
Okay, I will get those too. Uh, we are recommending a cap on, um, the boards that, um, the increases be between 1% and does not exceed 5%.
For the Board of Supervisors?
For the Board of Supervisors.
Amanda says yes. She did. I'll go with what she says.
And then, of course, once again, our comparison counties are the same, Amara Delgado, Lake Stanislaus, Nevada, Sutter, and Tooluma. So, I will, I will email everybody out the policies, and then welcome, um, we will bring that back to you. One of the things that I did want to circle back and address, at the time Evergreen did their presentation, and this is actually their slide, so, I haven't touched anything here, this was Evergreen's slide, Evergreen did use a little bit different parameters than, than what the policy has, and these were the increases that they were recommending. Like I said, right now, by using their formula, there is not a recommended increase for the Board of Supervisors, but using their formula, there is still, uh, increases that, recommendations for the other elected officials. Um, and in fact, using their formula, it's actually a little bit less than using, um, the new policy formula. So, I did want to, uh, to find out if your board is interested in moving forward with increases for our elected officials, since they did not receive them during the class and comp.
Could I ask a quick question? During the class and comp, for everybody else, wasn't there, um, an allowance, I mean, if you were, if you were above 7%, am I making sense here, then that, that was a, a category to be looked at?
So, what happened with our, our class and comp is that we placed people with the new salary ranges, we placed people closest to where, um, their current salary is without them receiving a reduction. Some people saw higher increases than others, um, some saw a few cents per paycheck, and, um, and that was it. So, we did go back and look at employees that, because of the way the new salary grade, going from five to seven, um, there were some circumstances where they would not come out ahead with the new policy, so we adjusted them accordingly.
Right.
And went ahead and moved them up a step to make sure that they were not, they did not see less money by us implementing this class and comp, um, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you.
If I may, um, you just asked a question on compensation, and if we are willing to move forward on those, if, if it works out to those ends, since we didn't do any during the class and comp. My answer to that is, right now, I'm considering going back on some of my decisions based on what our revenue is, on our, on our, on our final revenue, when we go into September. So, I'm not willing to, uh, make a commitment either way until September, personally, because if I go the other way with other things, I'm not going to say, yep, but, but give them more, you know, which very well could be the case. That's just-
Well, I read the opposite vote, because I was thinking of these numbers that were going to be presented, and I think the other electeds, not the Board of Supervisors, everybody else, um, have waited long enough for this comp study, um, to happen, and I don't think it's fair that we continue to hold them hostage. So, I'm in favor of how that works, um, with our, our budget numbers, and if, um, I don't think they need to sit here and be waiting any longer, it's not fair.
So, to give you an idea of the amount, and so, like I said, there's kind of two things here. The, um, recommendation by, um, Evergreen, it would be a total increase annually of, um, 71,000, and then a quarter of that would come off, just because the timing it would take to get the, um, increase implemented, and so, um, and then, if we implemented it per policy, it was about 81,000, but due to the timing, it would, uh, for fiscal year 20, um, 25, 26, it would be, um, 61,000.
Yeah, is there any public comment regarding this?
Um, can I just-
Sure, one moment, one moment, Carlos.
That's okay, I need to stand up, just take a walk. Go ahead. Oh, who's your thing?
Um, did you want to go through the last two slides, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, our next steps here, I do need, of course, the feedback from your board on how we want to move forward with the policies, what changes, um, we need, we need to make, and then also, of course, board direction on if you want us to bring back recommended salary increases, um, and that is a, a separate item from the policy. And then, we will have to, um, repeal the current salary ordinances for the assessor, auditor, controller, clerk recorder, treasurer tax collector, district attorney, and sheriff, and then, we would bring the policy back in a resolution, so then also, it's a little bit easier to update going forward. Um, we do need to repeal ordinance 2908, that ties your board's salary to, um, the five elected officials. We also need to repeal any resolutions that tie the four elected department heads together, and then, we would bring back the final, um, compensation policy, and then, for the Board of Supervisors, it will be codified in the county code of, um, ordinances, and then, we would bring back, um, the final compensation policy for the elected, um, officials, um, that's adopted by resolution. So, there's a little bit of stuff in there.
I know that seems like a lot procedurally, because it is. Um, obviously, we, you know, as I mentioned previously, board salaries have to be set by ordinance, right? You currently have an ordinance tying it to those other electeds, so we have to kind of untangle that, do the new board compensation policy by ordinance, and then, for whatever reason that I can't explain to you here, we have historically set other electeds, non-board salaries, also by ordinance, there's no requirement that that be effectuated via ordinance, other jurisdictions do it via resolution, so, we, we're looking to shift to that going forward, just because it's simpler, um, but in order to do that, we obviously have to have the board repeal the existing ordinance or ordinances that set those salaries, so, there's a lot of moving parts, unfortunately, um, so, that's, that's the lay of the land.
Thank you.
Once repealed, what happens if we don't put four another ordinances in, I'm in the book?
Are, so, you're speaking for the other electeds?
For any of them.
Well, uh, obviously, we would not recommend that we have nothing in place setting compensation, so we'll do it all, you know, sort of concurrently and time it, but the idea is that we would, you know, do a new ordinance for the board to take effect in replacement of the existing ordinance, and then, get rid of the ordinance or ordinances for the other electeds, and replace that with a resolution that would take effect at that point. And, and the reason, and then, just to be really clear, and I apologize if it's already clear, but, the reason why, um, Ms. Hawkins is asking for direction, both on the polit- bringing the policies back, as well as whether the board wants to consider an immediate, um, change for the other electeds, is because these policies are drafted to basically utilize this formula and result in potential increases with the start of every budget cycle, so, to the extent the board wanted there to be salary increases for the other electeds now, as opposed to next fiscal year, that would have to be a separate action by the board.
If we didn't do them now, based on the salary, with the, and the new policy set forward, they would get the full amount based on the year in the concurrent year.
Yes, whatever the formula in the policy spit out for next fiscal year would go into effect at that time.
Right, so, the, the, the gap would be the amount difference for the current fiscal year, if that was the direction of the board. Okay, understood.
Now, we'll move to public comment.
You sure? How many people in this room do I trust? One. Oh, did you want to say something? Okay, one, two, and for different reasons. Three, four, and none of you, none of you, with money. And, say, I, I, I go to somebody and say, listen, I need a recommendation of how much I should be paid, and I'll pay you for it. What's basically going on here? And, um, let's say more developed counties. Tell you the truth, I'm only, it just is a handful of counties I'm, uh, really familiar with when it comes to pay studies, they leave it up to a commission, they leave it up to a committee, they leave it up to the grand jury, they don't make these decisions and have staff, uh, staff do the work for them, have direct control over staff, it's just not what you do. In, in these rural counties, we've seen, uh, we've seen, we've seen the Board of Supervisors pay skyrocket in the last year, last few years. It used to be considered something you did because you believed, because you believed in the government, because you believed you could help people, and you went and did it. Now, you're going to say, well, that's going to leave a lot of people out that couldn't afford to be supervisors. Well, history has shown that in Calaveras County, most everybody either has a passive income, a, uh, a partner that's making income, another job, that's not passive, that they actually go to. In, in this county, right now, at this time, none of you are doing your jobs, you don't answer your county supplied phones, you don't hold, you don't hold meetings, you don't hold regular meetings, uh, office hours for your constituents, you do none of that. It's just a farce. Send it to the grand jury, send it to a committee, send it to a commission, do not do it yourselves. It's just, doesn't look good, it's not right, and it's not what the, the public elected you to do, to give, to hire people to, to create formulas to give you raises. And, and I don't trust Evergreen, it's the same thing, they want to come back, they want more business from you, they are going to, uh, they're going to give you a, a result that's going to eventually result in higher pay, maybe not today, maybe, maybe not five years from now, but it eventually happens. Okay, you're taking a little bit of a, a hit, if you, if you take their formula. But, listen, the people in this county, the median income, an individual, not a household, because you correspond with households, the individual's making $37,000 a year, and I don't care if you have a family, I don't give a possum's posterior. I want you folks to start doing your job, and I want you to do it at a reasonable rate. It's like your contractors, my contractor, the public's contractor. Twelve seconds to go. I can give this to you if you have any questions. I doubt that you do, you don't really think on your foot, on your feet very well, do you? Okay. Hey, what happened? I just got more time.
District Attorney, um, do I have three minutes, or? I just wonder how fast it-
Just go for it.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to, um, thank HR and admin for making some of the, um, corrections on one of the prior drafts. Initially, there was some very concerning language, um, going to be proposed to you, including kind of a, what I would call a quota-based system, um, that was highly unethical. Um, our decision should always be made on seeking justice, not on seeking bonuses, so I'm very pleased that that language was removed. Um, and during one, in one of the prior versions as well, um, Evergreen linked up, um, the appointeds with some of the electeds, however, um, county council was excluded from that mix of the appointeds, and that made absolutely no sense to me, um, that was fixed in the current version. Um, but, am I understanding that you have not received the current versions of the policies?
It was attached to the agenda item.
Okay. But it's not-
That was the discussion, it works with the computer.
Oh.
Gary Toffenelli and I more often than not use our iPads, so, we brought up before, but the, I guess, not everyone got the memo, that if they attach it in a different way, we don't get it on our iPads.
So, I don't want to get in too much into the weeds of what the policy says, I, I understand that would not be very productive, um, but I did want to start off with my thank yous, um, I think this is a very big undertaking, um, you know, I don't know why, um, the electeds were excluded when the class and comp came around a year ago, but I'm very happy that it is finally coming up, um, and I would encourage you to, um, keep, keep going the way it seems like you are going, it does seem like you do want to deal with this once and for all. Um, I do support, um, somewhat of this automated approach, um, I think that the current formula is, is, is not for the sheriff and the office of the district attorney, the same as a prior version, um, however, I'm satisfied with a more simplified version, um, if only because I think that's going to make it easier on HR and relieve, alleviate some of the burden year after year. I think that with somewhat of this automated approach set by policy, I think that actually will save time. I don't think there will be any struggling and arguing over what is supposed to happen, and it will be surely, it'll be essentially just a, a budgetary concern, and so, you still would have that, um, ability to say, hey, you know what, not this year, we just can't afford it, and I think everyone understands that, and that would be the only kind of struggle going forward, it just would keep everything fairly, um, even keeled. Um, I, if I'm following correctly, um, we are possibly going to be coming back with some policies and some recommendations. Um, in the PowerPoint, there is a slide with a recommendations kind of table, if you will, that puts forth numbers, um, that if I'm following correctly, are just the numbers that Evergreen came up with, they are not the numbers that would be the actual numbers per the formula.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And so we don't, still don't know what those numbers would be. During this process, we did have a couple of meetings, the other electeds. I think one of the meetings was with Evergreen, but they have certainly been with HR as well. And there was a question about what the point of the salary grade for the appointeds would be used in the formula. And it was explained to us that it would just, it was just the midpoint, right? It's not the low point, it's not the high point, it is the midpoint. And I recall the question being asked of Evergreen, why the midpoint? How did you come up with that? And the answer being no more than, it just shows the midpoint. And so it's still, you know, I'm in a quandary over why the midpoint. The electeds do not get step raises, so, and while I appreciate the formula, picking the midpoint just seems very random. It seems to me that it should be the top point, you know, or there should be some explanation why it wouldn't be the top point. With the appointeds going up automatically with merit increases, the electeds do not, unless the salary grade actually changes, that midpoint is not gonna change, no matter what happens with the appointeds. So I just, you know, and I don't know, I haven't mapped it out, I don't know if it makes a difference. It's just for me, as you can imagine, I like to ask questions and I like to know why, you know? And if there could be a perfectly legit reason, it could make complete and total sense, I just have not gotten an explanation. And so with the formula being reconsidered, with the lack of presentation of what the actual numbers are going to be, I would query, what is HR going to pick to start that formula? Is it going to be the midpoint of the salary grades? Or is it going to be some other point? And if it's going to be the midpoint, you know, why is that being selected? And I'm not asking for an answer right now on the spot, but that is kind of a lingering concern I have. And without an explanation, I, you know, I think, well, could it be this, could it be that? And I think it's a very important point going forward because this will be somewhat of an automated, hopefully, system. And there's benefits to that, but you gotta look at your starting point and the rationale for your starting point. So my bottom line for you today is that, you know, if we do nothing, if you do nothing, the electeds will remain status quo, and that's status quo over the last year. And for the office of the district attorney, what that means is that the county holds the office of the district attorney at a 15% less value than the office of county council. And that would be status quo going on for the last year. If you adopt Evergreen's recommendation chart, again, assigning value based on the salary scale, the county is holding the office of the district attorney over 10% less value than the office of county council. The DA is the chief law enforcement officer of the county. I mean, we put murderers and child rapists in prison for life. If you truly believe that the district attorney's office is a lesser office, I will accept that. I will respectfully disagree, but I will accept it, but I would, I would humbly request an explanation. You know, have we done something wrong? You know, I just, I really am struggling with this because of what the numbers are presented on paper. I understand that they may be different when HR has added with the new formula, but this was what was presented in paper to the board with this budget presentation. And, you know, I can't figure out what the rationale is. I also can't figure out what the rationale is for the difference in percentages. If you look at the chart, there is a wide swing in how the offices are valued. Supervisor Stopper, I think, was doing a lot of questioning on that. Why is this percentage? Why is it above? Is it below? And if you go down the list, I think that the assessor is still picked at 8.6% under. So, you know, it's, it's a wide swing. It's not like there was a point picked that, hey, we're gonna make everybody 5% or 3% or 2% or 8%. There's just kind of this wide swing that I have not heard any particular explanations for. Your electeds are elected by the citizens of this county. They are different from the appointeds, but they are all working department heads. You know, we are, we are small enough and our departments have had to take on more, just as every other department in the county has. So we are all elected officials and working department heads. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that you will see the value in each of our offices, and I'm hoping that you will see the value in, in dealing with this sooner rather than later before the inequities become more extreme. Thank you.
Thank you.
So could I just make a couple of comments? I understand our district attorney's concerns over the formula, but remember that the internal comparison is only one point in the formula. We are also looking at external comparisons for our elected officials. And so those may create a bigger change in the formula than our internal, which are only by steps. Those are set right now by the board, and they have steps, true, but they're set at that rate. Whereas the elected officials, what we're looking at is that's one point. The other is to look at other similar positions in other counties, which may result in a larger increase in a single year for the electeds. We're also proposing to put these in resolution so that if we notice that there is an issue with the formula and that it's not keeping up with our internal appointed officials, the board could certainly change the formula at that point in order to make sure that the equity remains with our elected officials. So we know that this isn't perfect. I don't think there is a perfect way for doing this. We do want to make sure that we are compensating folks who have high skills, like our district attorney, our assessor, our auditor controller. These are all very high-skilled folks. We want to make sure that we're compensating them fairly, and we're hoping that this will move us in that direction. Again, we're setting this by resolution so that it would be easier to change in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Jay.
I would like to address, of course, using a midpoint is standard when benchmarking. And so a lot of times, I mean, you may choose to be in the top 25%, the middle, or the bottom. So we chose the midpoint, which is, is a normal average when you're comparing salaries because our appointeds do have a range. When we're looking at market, our comparable counties do not, except for Sutter has a range for elected officials. They're the only ones we have found. So that's why Evergreen did choose a midpoint, like I said, which is standard in doing benchmarking.
Supervisor Stopper?
Not too aw, I don't know of any instance where anybody's ever chosen the top to start with, to start. I, I'm not familiar of one personally. I mean, that's just, it's not a thing.
It's not typical. It is not typical.
Right, yeah. Unless people are doing it to, you know, self reasons. I mean, as a board from this side, I'm not saying you, Barbara, but I mean, it's not typical at all. But something I do want to say is the compaction, and I would like to, you know, as Gary and I said, we know, we need to go through the policy deeper and read into it, but I might have some ideas after going through that on compaction when it comes to the appointed department heads as opposed to the elected. But also, I just had on my mind, and I lost it, darn it. But, yeah, to that point, I think we definitely need to go through it. It's pretty standard for the average. I'm not gonna go to the top personally. It's, that's just not a thing for me. So, I mean, there's your explanation. That's typical, be, you know? But at the same time, I think compaction, not just with the person underneath within said department, but with other working department heads. And, okay, here's where I was going. I, and I love it that you are a working department head as an elected. I think that's awesome. And I believe everyone here right now is a working department head. But in our policies and everything, I, and I, like, you're, you're great, Barbara, so I'm not projecting to you, on you or any of the other elected officials right now. But I know in the past, there's been elected officials that know, they don't have to be here all the time, do they? How often do they have to be here? Sarah?
You're, you're correct that theoretically, an elected could not do much, and the board obviously has no control over removing them or anything else, you know?
Right. And, and so we can appreciate the fact that we do have people here at this time that are working department heads. But in the future, there could be the scenario where someone gets elected that, you know, might show up to move their eraser on their desk every day. And, but, I, so, you have certain points I do hear, and other instances, I, I'm not 100% there. And I just, the only thing I have a hard time with what you said is absolutely, your job is imperative in keeping molesters and different type of people in jail that are criminals. But it's hard for me to start appreciating when you make that comparison when it comes to someone else with their wage. I never put them higher than you based on their compensation. I do think that, you know, you deserve, based, based on what you do, and fairly, moving forward. You know, it's just, I don't like it being leveraged that way personally. That's all.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I appreciate you, Barbara.
Thank you. This is kind of what I was trying to make a point of. And if we're gonna do a policy that it takes away from the board, which is basically what you're asking us to do, it'll just be going on and on and on, and the board can bring it back if they want or whatever. It's basically taking our ability to look at a situation similar to what Barbara was pointing out and maybe rectifying it. We'd have to go through a lot of process because you're asking us to go into this formula that will continue to go every year. And I just have an issue with that, taking it away from the board in that way. So that's where I'm at right now.
Would the board be willing to go forward and say, as a direction then, to bring back these policies then, and we'll take a look at it?
I'm not opposed to bringing the policies back and we can relook at them. I need to look at everything. If you could send the policies to me, and then we can go through it, and I can make my adjustments on what I think. But again, I'm not sure I'm in favor of taking it away from the board, which is what's happening here.
Supervisor Stopper?
I hear what he's saying, and I think that, like, we, when we gave direction before, I'm in favor of doing it for the board separate. So then that takes us out of that equation. That's what I've had the hard time with the whole time. So, you know, as it comes forward, you know, making a decision with the board on the policies for the other electeds. I could go either way, but I want, I do personally want to make sure that we aren't tied to it at the hip. I think that would be best way to go.
Correct.
And then we can work on how we're gonna make it right for, for, for the rest of the electeds.
I wasn't meaning the board or salaries, I'm meaning the other electeds.
I get it. Supervisor Paulendorf?
No, lost my thought. Yeah.
I lost my train of thought. I believe you may have something else.
I know what you're thinking.
Oh, I know. Okay. I like the separation of the Board of Supervisors. I think that's always been an issue because it was tied to the other elected position. So I'm, I am good on going that route. In terms of the other elected officials, I guess, going to what Gay is concerned about is making sure, and maybe I'm saying, I think I'm saying it in a different way, is making sure there's language that even though the automation, I'm fine with the automation, but should something arise, making sure it doesn't take away the ability for the board to make those adjustments in the future, if those formulas need to, this disparity needs to be changed. I know that in here, there is language of 15% from subordinate or number two in charge, however you want to call that. But if there's really truly disruptions, we can, we already do one-off for the department head. Would the board be able to do those one-off for elected officials should it weren't it? And I think that's the concern.
And I think, so with, as currently drafted, the policy doesn't permit for that. And I think that thought process was to, to make it fairly automated so that there's not this sort of, on a yearly basis or periodic basis, you know? It doesn't, it's not always a conversation. To your point, Supervisor Paulendorf, the way that it's currently drafted would require a change to the policy to do that, but I think in my mind, that's a big part of the reason why we're gonna take away it being via ordinance and make it just be via a simple resolution. Because all the board would have to do at that point is do a new resolution tweaking the policy, and now we've got a new policy.
Would that?
Because it's very cumbersome, obviously, to have to do it via ordinance.
But would, can there be a line, like, should there be significant reason for the board to do, you know, a one-off to discuss an elected official, a non-board elected official salary, to make those adjustments outside of the one-year auto? Because I, I agree, it's always an issue when it comes back every year or every time we do this. And there's perception that is negative with the public on all electeds, but that shouldn't hinder, you know, the reflection of the work that these individuals do. And so, but maybe if there's something built in, like, should there be something outside of this in-world that is argument to HR?
We could draft language, so obviously, we can't draft language giving any sort of discretion like that into the board policy without that triggering, you know, needing a new ordinance. But with respect to the other electeds, we could draft in language that basically says, you know, this is the policy, this is the framework, but at any time, the board can direct, you know, a particular salary to be, I mean, we could, yeah, we can, we can certainly draft that in.
I think, at least for me.
We can add something like that to the draft before it comes back.
Then I guess there is different, Gay shaking his head, so I guess my mind was somewhere else than Gay's, so.
Well, no, but then why even have the resolution at all? Why don't we just adopt the policy and leave the resolution out of it and it can still come back to the board every year? I think we're taking away from the board, and then we're trying to make these adjustments for everything, and it doesn't make sense to even do that if that's what we're trying to do, because you know as well as I do, you can't just bring a resolution back and you can't redraft a resolution. It's gonna take time to do that. So I don't see why we even need that part of a resolution then, and just have it.
It should, salaries do need to be set by resolution, so that's why there's a resolution. But that's, I mean, that's not complicated, like, that's relatively easy to accomplish. I mean, I think, to your point, Supervisor Toffenelli, if a majority of the board wants to have annually an item, a freestanding board item where it's, you know, set the, set the elected official salaries for this year, that is absolutely your prerogative, and we can absolutely draft a policy that says that. We were looking to avoid that for some of these reasons articulated, but that's, that's a policy choice.
Could I, could I ask Supervisor Andel, how do you feel about this?
I'm definitely in favor of untying us from the other electeds so that we can address them as soon as possible and get them to where they need to be without all the attention, you know, on us. I would, it did confuse me, this recommendation chart from Evergreen, not with kind of the adopted policy plan. So it'd be helpful to see that in comparison.
So I think some of the conversations that I have had with the elected officials is because this was recommended when Evergreen did their presentation, it was just trying to establish if the board was wanting us to make a change now as recommended by Evergreen or move forward per the policy. So that's why we had, we brought back up there. So that's why we had, we brought back up their recommendation because it was asked that we bring that back with the policy that was drafted. So I apologize for the confusion, but it was just to see if the board was wanting to do something immediately for the elected officials.
Supervisor Stopper?
Are you, do you have more to say? Hearing what they, they're, they're going through with the thought process kind of like really triggers what really, where I'm trying to get. I think, so again, separating us, number one, yes. And, and, and coming up with that formula for us that we, we could agree on so that moving forward, we're not making our own decision on our salaries. Having what you have there presumptive, presumptive as a resolution for a baseline for us to work off of every year and then bring it forward to the board possibly is where I'm maybe thinking of going. But, you know, that's, that's the, that's for what, what you present and we decide as the board as a whole in the future.
Supervisor Follendorf? Supervisor Toffenelli? So what we're asking then is definitely, we don't want the supervisors attached. Secondly, is it possible to do it two ways that we see the policy as a...
So we, we could, okay, so first, first direction I think is clear, bring back, and it's going to have to obviously happen via ordinance, the new policy for board compensation, which we've discussed. Then I think the second thing, so it sounds, maybe what I'm hearing is that I work with HR to draft two different drafts of elected, non-board elected official compensation policy, one which would look basically like what was attached to today's board item in as much as it's automatic, sort of. And then one which involves alternatively bringing an item to the board every single year, sending or setting that elected compensation.
It's, go ahead.
The other reason I have concern about bringing it back to the board every year is then what political pissing match are we going to set up for the future? You're not going to agree with your other elected. Let's take the sheriff, for example. You get another sheriff, the board is, a different board, the board of supervisors isn't happy with the sheriff, and then you become a pissing match of not approving the salary every year. I mean, I just, I think it's, I think we're setting up, I think we're setting up...
There's good reasons.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm saying, I, we need to lay it on the table. I, I think we're setting the future board supervisors up for fail, failure. We're setting the non, the other electeds up for failure. I, I just, I just have concern, I really am worried about that. I know, hopefully, we all are in good graces currently, but we're setting something for the future and we know how that looks like because we are dealing, I know. But we've got a lot of people that are going to be up for election that we could change as a board. And so that's why I was asking, could there be a carve-out that we don't do that, but there's some, something that ties the board? But I'm worried of the political fallout of that, quite frankly. Because we're not going to have a, we all work well together for the most part, but I don't want to set up for future failure.
Out front, go on. Madam CEO?
So would it be helpful? I think the concern here is that the formula somehow results in an inequitable salary for an elected official. Would it be helpful if we set some perhaps percentage parameters that any salary that's outside of that percentage parameter for internal, our appointed department heads, that that would be something that would come back to the board for consideration and adjustment?
Would that answer?
It's part of the compaction idea, you know, because it does say specifically in there, you know, the second or, you know, deputy underneath them, but it doesn't consider the other appointed department heads. And that's one thing very clear to me that makes sense, you know, because I, I believe that when Evergreen came out, I saw that, you know, and it was very apparent because it put, it put certain departments so far off the electeds and that's a concern. So, yeah, something to that point, but at the same time, is there any way we could get a compaction thing in there that we could all agree to? I don't know.
Well, so I just want to be clear. So, I mean, we usually, we typically use compaction to refer, as you said, to the up and down, right, vertically within a command structure or a department. And so it, and that is built in, as you mentioned. So it sounds like you're, you're also wanting to maybe put some framework in that...
Compares with the other department.
Which, again, which is also factored into the formula, but maybe there's a way of adding something that says that the total output, like the ending formula then has to be within a certain range.
I gotta sit down with the formula and so here's where I'm, where I'm at right now. Let's, I think we have somewhat of a direction, you know, on, in, I'm sorry.
No, I gotta go pee.
I know, I know. So I, I, I need all the actual salaries and sit down with the formula in there right now and then I, if I, if I want to tweak it based on what I start coming up with the numbers, I'll do that later.
Okay, I do also want to mention, we do have in the policy regarding making sure that they're not 10% outside of market. We can include internal in that and so then we're making sure that they are not more than 10% outside of internal. So we can tweak that wording in there.
Unless there was conflict. Okay.
And then the last thing that I think we need direction on, I apologize Supervisor Follendorf, is whether the board, in addition to bringing back these two policies, as we've just discussed, does the board want us to at this time bring back an increase now for the electeds? Because again, these policies would effectuate increases with the start of a fiscal year.
Okay, actually, do you mind? This is going to take a little, do you want to just take a two-minute break?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's a big...
Barb, are you going to be considerate of the ladies?
We're, okay, we're, we are back. Madam County Council, could you review the third?
I think the last thing that Ms. Hawkins needed direction on, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is whether, given that these policies contemplate potential salary changes happening on an annual basis concurrent with a new fiscal year, does the board want to separately have HR bring back more immediate compensation changes for the elected department heads?
Thank you.
Sooner than next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Sooner than next fiscal year is September for me. But yes, sooner than next fiscal year and then I can, so whenever you bring it back, I can contemplate it, but it kind of fits with the budget.
So concurrent with the adoption of the budget?
That's what I would like to see.
Okay.
It seems like everybody's in favor of that, right? So that gives direction on all three points. Is there anything else that you need?
No, I think that's, that's, that's it. We'll be bringing the policies back to you and then we will be bringing back the recommended salaries.
An apologies in advance for the many steps in which it will be brought back to you, but as mentioned, we do have to unengage with the current structure.
Thank you. So, super.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. I'm sorry to possibly cause this to go on so...
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Chief.
Anytime.
So we'll move on now to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of a local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Supervisor Stopper?
No, thanks, sir.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
I attended a LAFCO meeting last night, which, with Supervisor Follendorf's help and a couple of city members, they elected me chair of LAFCO, so...
Is that when the TVs broke?
So that's all I had to report.
Supervisor Follendorf?
Yes, and August 7th, there will be a short-range transit, community, short-range transit plan, community workshop from 4:00 to 5:30 at the San Andres Town Hall. That's all I have to report. And, oh, yeah, he did book the TVs last night.
Supervisor Andal?
I attended a fundraiser in Raro Flats for the community center on July 12th and met with their board. They're having another one on July 26th. And I intended the CSAC New Supervisor Institute Module 3 in Sacramento, July 17th and 18th and wrapped that up and know everything there is to know now. Learned a lot, made a lot of great connections. I really appreciate California State Association of Counties and the training they provided.
Awesome. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for the strategic planning session that we did on the 9th and 10th. That was awesome. I really thought it was very beneficial. On the 12th, the Madam Homeowners Association I attended. On the 17th, the museum hosted the Bear Valley Music Festival. I only bring that up because the lineup this year is fantastic. If anybody gets a chance to go, please do. On the 18th, I wanted to thank Mica and Scott for going up to Sky High with me to discuss snow plowing. And also, I want to just mention that Britt Floyd last weekend at Ironstone was off the hook, amazing. We've got a great lineup. We have Ringo Starr coming, we've got Melissa Etheridge. It's, it's just a great lineup this year, so hopefully we'll do really well. So we'll see you there. Yes.
Sir, if I may, may come back to it, you know, not attending the strategic planning session, I had other commitments. Ms. Denise had a, put on a full thing, so I'll be reviewing it in its entirety prior to going into November, when we go back into the strategic planning session, so...
Perfect. Just, thank you. Thank you all. We'll adjourn this part of the meeting. We do need to go back into closed session and we will report out next meeting. Thank you.